Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, May 26 Town Council Committee of the Hole Meeting. It is 6:32 and all councilors are present with the exception of Councilor Heath, who is out of town. He may be able to make it. And Councilor Parker, who is attending a TVCCA meeting on behalf of the council this evening. Calendar and communications. Mr. Burt, we will start with you. I believe you have an announcement about an executive order in the Long Term Economic Recovery Committee, please.
Yes, I did sign an executive order today, an emergency declaration number two, to establish the local long-term recovery committee. That will be added to the agenda or the minutes packet so people can see that. All the council members should have got it. That details the membership of it. But, and I've asked people just to reply that are on the list that they do indeed want to participate. I've heard from a few people so far. And then I also just want to mention, you and I will be doing an update on town, some of the town services tomorrow, the library, the senior center, and the human services. The, we're still planning on Town Hall and Town Hall Annex to open on June 8th. Plexiglas should be in a couple of days before that, so it looks like it's timing out well. And then the library starts their curbside service next Monday. So they're working through the kinks on that right now, but we will have some more details on those, some of those services tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Burt. So we will go to council communications and we'll start with Councilor Bordaline, please.
Are we able at this point to ask a question in reference to what he just stated, meaning the town manager?
Yes.
Or you want me to wait to the end?
No, go for it.
I just had a question. So the executive order that you signed and the list of people that came out to us, is there possibility of more to come onto that list? Or do you think this is a good representation? Or do you think there's more people that should be involved? Thank you.
The mayor and I had some early discussions on it and then the council had some discussions on it. I'm good with it, but it could certainly be amended at any point. And eventually, once we're no longer in an emergency status, the council will need to reaffirm this committee. You can also make changes at that point because maybe some of the duties shift at that point.
Okay. I don't believe we like voted on like who is going to be on that list. I mean, at least I haven't, but I just wanted to check. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Baumgartner.
I didn't do my qualifications. Yeah, that was a question to the mayor first.
I'm sorry. When you said thank you, I assumed you were finished. Go ahead.
I was just thanking him for responding to me, but thank you. I was just going to say that I attended the field task group committee and a lot of great information, a lot of people that have been attending and it's a lot of great information. I encourage everybody to tune in. Thank you.
Councilor Baumgartner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to report other than that I was appointed by Mayor Grantowski to the Long Term Recovery Committee. So I thank you, Mayor, for your appointment and very much looking forward to working with our manager, Mayor Hedrick, as well as our, my fellow councilors, Obrey and Bordaline, to ensure that our businesses and our citizens have the support they need going into what is going to be a very long-term recovery, to say the least. So again, thank you, Mayor, for your appointment and nothing further to report.
Thank you, Councilor Baumgartner. Councilor Franco.
Hi, thank you. I have a question for Mr. Burt. I had been downtown Mystic and I had noticed the signs going over the bridge. They were had, there used to be walking direction signs and I don't see those up any longer. Were those taken down?
Not at my request. I don't know. I'll have to ask about it. So where were, which ones were they?
The ones on the Groton side that would say, you know, cross the bridge, go this way, you know?
Yeah, and yeah, I'm surprised they would, we had no intention of taking them down. Though unless DOT found them out. We did have some signs that were a little bit lower or higher, lower one of the other than. And actually Greg, I wonder if he, actually with Greg on here, he might know something.
Okay.
Greg, do you know anything about signs coming down?
No, I don't know anything about that. I'll have to look into that tomorrow because I know they're all put in place per DOT's requirements.
Okay.
All right. Well, I was downtown, I drove through downtown this weekend and today and I didn't see them. And I specifically looked up for them today. Also, some things that have happened in the last two weeks. I had brought forward the idea for the mayor to hold weekly briefings regarding town of Groton issues that were important to residents and those are now on YouTube and also on public access by GMTV. And the mayor is co-hosting with the town manager. And hopefully this will answer a lot of questions that residents have around town. I talked with many residents and business owners regarding town issues and mostly reopening in this time of COVID. I run around town and reviewed a lot of the outdoor dining that's happening and how businesses are now setting up outside in parking lots and on sidewalks and trying to bring in some kind of business in this new age. I also wanted to notate that there's some very large renovations going on at the Oyster Club. And the building that's located next to SIFT and across from Chelsea Groton and next to Densmore Oriental in downtown Mystic has been demolished. And I guess what's going on there, I had talked to Mr. Burt and he had said it was going to be a mixed-use project with underground parking and I guess retail and apartments. And also I had noticed on 184 and Cow Hill, that corner, that sidewalk that had been brought up numerous times about wanting to have it repaired was being repaired by the state. I attended the sports field task force this week. We discussed baseball and the next meeting will be about rectangle fields. Wanted to report that the Groton Feeds Groton fundraiser has raised about $12,626. And what they, what they're doing is buying restaurant gift cards and they're donating them to the food locker. So it helps area restaurants as well as helping those in need at the food locker. I also had a fundraiser which ended on the 18th of this month and the community helped donate $2,465. So I'll be dropping off a check this week for the Groton Food Locker. The adopted class of 2020 Senior Groton, Connecticut has over 107 seniors adopted. So what happened was they did a Facebook posting and people in our community came out and adopted these seniors to help make their COVID year more special. And I've also seen this past week they had outdoor drive-by parades going by all the graduates' houses and they put yard signs in and it was, it's really something really nice. And so that's about it for, for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Parker arrived at 6:37 for the record. Councilor Heath is not with us at this moment, so we will go to Councilor Melendez, please.
Hi. I just have Children First Groton got a $5,000 grant from the Groustine Memorial Fund for just basic COVID relief purchases and food for the community. That's it.
Wonderful. Thank you for working on that for us. We are on to Councilor Obrey.
Don't have a lot to tell you except I'm back in Connecticut. As you know, I went through my 14-day lockdown, which is tough to do, but happy to do it to make sure that I don't bring anything strange back to Connecticut. So just here trying to catch up on everything.
Thank you. Councilor Parker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am getting ready to email everyone the meeting minutes from our, my liaison report for TVCCA for this evening.
All right. Thank you. And Councilor Zepari.
Still report.
Thank you, sir.
Glad to see you smiling, smiling, Liam.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, there's a lot going on. I'm sure everyone's aware. They've been watching the news and everything that's happening as far as reopening. And I just encourage everyone to keep on staying safe and wearing your mask and social distancing. We're trying to protect our small business owners and their employees, so please be respectful of them and do your best to help everybody get back on track. As far as what's been going on this week, I've heard from several constituents about various issues regarding Esker Point Beach. I'm sorry, I haven't. And I attended a webinar on voter engagement and I've already reached out and shared with the League of Women Voters as to how municipal government can interact with entities like the league in order to encourage registration and participation in the electoral process. All right, so we are on to approval of minutes and we will start where we normally start. So Councilor Baumgartner, would you like to move the minutes, please?
Yes, I'd like to move items. So the March 28, 2020 revised special meeting minutes as well as the May 12, 2020 meeting minutes. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Obrey. And Mr. Burt, did you just want to go over what the revision was to the special meeting minutes for the public? Thank you.
This was at the request of the Finance Department. When the minutes, you remember it was got a little confusing under the charities, what's it called? The service agencies, how we kind of changed around the allotment of the dollars. The minutes reflected the correct total, but the allotment breakdown was a little off. So Finance submitted updated corrected minutes, but it doesn't change anything in our overall numbers. And Cindy's here if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Burt. Does anyone else have corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2022-51 and 2023-39, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight councilors? Okay, this evening, we have two items on the agenda under new business and they are both information that is going to be presented to the council for the first time this evening. And we will be hearing from staff. The first is 2023-41 Pavement Management Annual Report. And if you are tracking, this is on page 18 in your packet. And I believe we have Mr. Hanover that's going to present this, Mr. Burt?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Hanover, the floor is yours, sir. Everyone should have received this when you got your agenda packet. And for the public, it is posted in the agenda that you can find on the Town of Groton website. Mr. Hanover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Greg Hanover, Director of Public Works for the Town of Groton. It's my pleasure to present the Public Works annual report for the Town of Groton. Typically, this is done about January, so this year we kind of waited until March because we've had street scan, reinvesting the roads to get updated information. And then with the pandemic going on, it kind of pushed things off a little bit, but here we are. First, let me just give a real brief overview of pavement management since people may not know exactly what that is. It's, we start out by inspecting, you know, all the roads in the town, city, and Groton Long Point. There's 133 miles of roads. And these roads are looked at for distresses, which could be cracks, potholes, patches, trenches, you know, all the typical distresses the pavement sees in its lifetime. And then through an algorithm, these roads are assigned a pavement condition index, which is a score of zero to 100, zero being a failed road, 100 being a perfect road. So you'll hear me refer to PCI often throughout the presentation here. And PCI just stands for Pavement Condition Index. So the pavement management looks at all the, you know, the PCIs for all the roads and kind of puts a systematic and rational approach to using limited funds to do repairs, which could be anything from major reconstruction or just crack sealing to keep, you know, our roads good. And we kind of let, sometimes we let the bad roads go to a little bit more failure. So we're not just putting bad money on these bad roads. And I don't know, I was going to have a screen set, but I guess not. I'll just, I like some of the more important information in this three-page document that I submitted to you. You know, the department since 1998 has been doing pavement management. And in 2007, we updated it as well as included the city in Groton Long Point. That inspection was used as a referendum or as a basis for referendum in November 2012 for $11.2 million. There's a table on page one at the bottom that shows the original allocations. The town had slightly over 6.3 million, the city 3.5, and Groton Long Point just under $1 million in that original allocation. As of today, the remaining balance in those accounts, the town has roughly over 1.6 million, the city 121,000, and Groton Long Point, for all intents and purposes, has spent all of their money. This was originally a five-year authorization for 2012 to 2017. The Town Council, the RTM, did extend this to, for additional five years to 2022. So the town plans to use its remaining $1.6 million for this year and 2021. In the FYE 20 CIP funds were approved to hire a firm to go out and re-inspect the roads, which we, which we did, which we hired Street Scan Incorporated. And they went out in March of 2020. And, you know, they've came back in April with the results of their inspection. And we got a computer program that we use. It's a GIS-based program, which, you know, makes it very visual now. And we can do a lot of scenarios budget-wise. So it's really, you know, helpful for, for the department in figuring out which roads we're going to be, you know, rehabilitating. You know, generally, it's an industry standard that we try to keep PCI average of 70 or above. That's been in satisfactory range. The current PCI for all town roads, you know, in that table there in the middle of page two shows the towns a 71 and the city in Groton Long Point about 75. Now, in order to maintain that PCI, say, for the next five years, you can see it's $1.2 million per year just for the town roads. And the city, the program put out 130,000. I'm a little bit skeptical of that number. I think it should be probably more than that. We've got to go back and look at some of the numbers that were used for that. And then Groton Long Point is about 62,000. And I think the town in Groton Long Point, I'm pretty confident with those numbers. The city, we have to reevaluate that one. You know, in order to increase the town's PCI up to about a 75 to be equivalent to the city in Groton Long Point, we're looking at like $1.8 million a year. You know, as you put money into these roads, you know, the ones that you're not addressing, obviously, you know, every year they get worse and worse. So, you know, it's a never-ending cycle. Some of the accomplishments that we did last year, we did not do a lot of roads last year in 2019. We only did one town road, that was Pumpkin Hill Road from Route 184 to the town line with Ledgerd. We did do one road in Groton Long Point and then we did a bunch of other miscellaneous paving projects. Police station, library parking lots, the main entrance at Par Four and some sidewalk projects. This year, it's going to be a little different. We've got a whole slew of streets to do. They're shown on page three here. These roads, we've been putting off for a few years now because of the work that EverSource Gas was doing in these Mystic neighborhoods and also Querend did some water main replacement. So starting June 1st, which is next week, we're going to be out working on Irving, Judson, Capson, Walter Fish. After we get those completed, we're actually going to be jumping over to Groton Long Point. They've requested us to do a few roads for them where they're having some water main and seawall repairing, seawall repair work being done. And they're paying for that out of their own pocket. And we've given them some estimates for that, but they want us to do the work. After we're done with that, we're going to come back to Mystic, do Old Everts, Windward, Lapstrike, Top Sail, Clipper Court, Island View. And one road that was not included for some reason in this list was Overlook Avenue. And I would like to include that because that road is in pretty poor shape, especially at the bottom by Capson Avenue. And it had a gas line put into it, so it does have a, you know, some trenches and services. So it would be nice to get that road done as well. So these roads here, we've estimated are going to cost about $600,000 to do this year, $650,000. That'll leave us about $1 million for 2021. And you're using the Street Scan computer program. We did an analysis of collector roads and it's telling us that we should be looking at the four roads at the bottom here, which is Sandy Hollow from High Street to Pequot, Buddington Road, Flanders Road, and Military Highway. These are all major collector roads that pretty much have been neglected for quite some time. So for the biggest bang for the buck, we should be looking at, you know, reclaiming and redoing these roads. I also included in the packet a rather lengthy list. Just if, you know, if you're curious of what road has what PCI, there is a list in the packet and it's rather lengthy. But that's, that's all I had. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hanover. At this point, I just wanted to say that we are looking at having an in-depth discussion about where to go with the road study. And we're looking at doing that in June, possibly at the Committee of the Hole Meeting on the 23rd of June. It's tentative at this point, depending on how things play out with the pandemic and where we are if something new crops up. So at that point, when we have that discussion in June at the Cow, that's when we'll be talking about, do we bond again? Do we do CIPs again? Do we include things like complete streets? All of these different items will be taken up at that point. For this evening, what I would like for the rest of the council to do is to ask questions about the report itself. If you need help understanding the way something was written or you have a question about how to read the charts, anything like that, now would be the time for that type of question. But in June is where we'll be making our decisions about how we're going to proceed now that we have the information. So having said that, I don't see any hands. Councilor Obrey.
I'm just wondering if possibly, would it be appropriate to have a couple of streets looked at that I think need some attention?
I'm sure we can take a look at them.
Well, New London Road, you know, where you're coming down over the hill, it veers off to the right instead of straight down. That road is in atrocious condition. And the other road that really bothers me is the road that goes up to Spyglass. I don't know if, I'm pretty sure the town owns that one. It was given over many years ago, I think. And that one is in terrible condition.
Is that Antonino Road, Councilor Obrey?
I know, the one on the other side. I think.
Money Hollow?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I know New London Road. I don't, I should have had that on the list because I think we had included that for 2021.
Okay, well, I'll leave it to you to check those two and let me know what your thoughts are.
Okay, thank you.
So basically, we're saying now we have the money to cover what we're planning to do. What we'll be looking at is future projects. Is that correct?
Yeah, we have the money for this year and next year. So what the mayor is talking about would be started in 2023.
Okay. I guess that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Or 2022, I'm sorry.
I thought you were leaving out a year.
So, so yeah, so we're going to be having a lot of big decisions and tonight's the night when staff is turning over their work to us. And it's our job now to take this information, read it and start thinking about where we want to go with it. But tonight's not the night to decide where we're going with it. We're just here to receive the information. Councilor Baumgartner was next in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you Director Hanover for your work on this report. Actually, the mayor took the words out of my mouth when she mentioned complete streets. You know, and as you were formulating this report, what considerations were given to making, when you're looking to repave a road? What considerations are given to improving both pedestrian safety and also building bicycle infrastructure, as you know, and really things to your work and the department's work? Whenever Source is looking to, to do their work, whether it's, you know, laying a gas line. You know, the town rightfully is looking to repave those roads concurrently so that you don't have to, you know, go back and, you know, redo work. And, and which obviously adds a cost to both repairs and taxpayers, so it's far more efficient. So again, did, when you were formulating this report, does the town consider making those, making pedestrian safety improvements and building bicycle infrastructure?
It's certainly one of the things we look at. You know, a lot of these residential streets already have sidewalks in them that we're doing this year. But, you know, if there's a need for crosswalks, some, you know, potentially some new handicap ramps for pedestrians, with, you know, we can, we can put those in or we do that ahead of time. Certainly next year when we do these collector roads, we can take a look at possibly reducing pavement width scenarios or creating, you know, striped bicycle lanes, you know, making narrow travel lane, travel lanes and, you know, signage and striping for bike lanes, kind of like we did on Thomas Road.
And how does that factor, the condition of that surrounding infrastructure or infrastructure on the road as indicates with bike lanes, how would that factor into the PCI?
That doesn't factor into the, the PCI is just strictly looking at the condition of the pavement. So, you know, that's primarily with the cost when we come up with those is just basically for pavement restoration. You know, all these other things, I mean, they're, you know, signage and line stripe is really inexpensive, so it's not going to add to the cost per se. But, you know, if we start talking about separate dedicated bike lanes and we're, you know, that's a different, different cost altogether.
Thank you. And so, you know, again, we'll have the opportunity to talk about this more in depth on the 23rd. But I, I do think it's important that, you know, we, we look to kind of implementing a complete streets vision when we're redoing our, our streets. That way we can not just, again, improve pedestrian safety, but make it our, our community more conducive to walk. our, our community more conducive to walking and, um, as you know, you know, with a COVID nineteen pandemic, we're now looking at, you know, and, and the case in, in Mystic, for example, um, there, you know, there's an opportunity to do, uh, dining on, on, um, you know, street side. And so I think this is kind of a new thinking we, we ought to embrace as, as we're building kind of the streets, streets for our future. So, uh, again, thank you Director Hanover and, um, no further questions.
Thank you, Council Baumgardner. Yeah, these, what Council Baumgardner raised are the types of things we need to be thinking about in advance before we have our next discussion on this. So any of those types of issues and then the bigger philosophical issues as to whether we want to bond again, whether we want to handle this in CIPs. We had that discussion briefly during the last, um, the, the, the twenty seventeen council, we'll say. Uh, we talked about that briefly, but that's something that those bigger type issues are what we need to be considering before we have the meeting on the twenty third. So I have two councillors in the queue. I have Council Franco and then Bordelain.
Mr. Hanover, um, so this list, it, does it contain all areas of Groton, including the city and Groton Long Point?
Uh, no, this is just the town. Um, I have a separate list that would have Groton Long Point and the, uh, and the separate list actually for the city as well.
So this isn't the completed, complete list, so is, does it also break it down by maps as well?
I'm sorry, by maps?
Like a map and, and like, does it show like numbers maybe on a map saying where certain areas of the, you know?
Yeah, actually, yeah. Um, and I'm gonna have to work with our GIS and IT to see if we can get this up on our GIS system, but it, it is. If we are able to pull up the whole town, including the sitting Groton Long Point, you can see, you know, every road, the PCI range is color coded, so it, it's very visual and it's, um, very easy to spot, you know, which roads, you know, you really, we should be paying attention to, um, because they're colored like dark red or red or orange or something like that. So it really shows you kind of highlights, you know, what roads need to be, uh, looked after.
Well, I would be very interested in seeing that map before our next meeting for sure. Um, I have a few other questions. So, um, as you had mentioned, Overlook is a road that you recommend to add to the list for twenty twenty? Is, maybe John Burden can answer this, is, what is the next step to try and get that added to the list? Because obviously on, it is rated at what, thirty-two, which is?
A portion of it, yes.
And it's also, that whole surrounding area is going to be paved this year, so it makes sense to do that at the same time, but how?
We need the council to vote to add that in, I believe. Um, they voted on the original list.
Okay, so that's something I should request maybe to bring to the, our next COW?
Yes. Now, assuming, uh, Greg, how does that fit into your schedule? Let's, oh, was that next year? It was not this year, or is this year or next year?
No, it was, it was this year. It was part of phase two, because phase two will be doing like Old Everts, Windward and Lapstreak. And, and like Council Franco said, you know, while we're there.
Right.
No mobilization cost.
Now, if we, if the COW looks at it in June and goes to the council the first week of July, would that be suffi- sufficient time or do you need?
That, that should be fine, because we're gonna be jumping to Groton Long Point after we do phase one, so.
Right. Now.
I'm gonna interject here for a second. Is there any objection while I have everybody's ears, or any objection to taking this item up at our next COW, at the, at the addition of Overlook? I see no objection, so that's fine. So you don't, I don't think you have to do, um, a referral, Council Franco, because no one's objecting to that, so we can add that to the next COW agenda. And we can vote on it. Mr. Hanover is indicating if we vote at the next COW and then the council in, you said July, correct? That would be sufficient time?
Yes.
Okay, and then I have a question for the twenty twenty one resurfacing. So Sandy Hollow, where it says High Street, uh, Pequot Ave. I recall that there's, um, land trying to be sold there for houses to be built, which would there be much construction on that road? And then if we're paving, would that maybe conflict?
Um, yeah, there's like a five or six lot subdivision along that road. I don't think they've sold any lots, maybe one or two, um, but no, I don't, I don't foresee that the construction, it's just, you know, uh, residential construction. I don't see that, uh, impacting our paving.
Okay, that's great. And then, um, thank you for bringing this report to us and I, I look forward to seeing it more in depth and with maps and color coding and I think that would be wonderful. Thank you.
We have two councillors in the queue. Council Bordelain is a Perry and then Obrey, I think had her hand up.
Thank you, yes.
Um, thank you. Um, thanks for the report. Um, I do support, uh, Council Baumgardner in looking at, making sure that we're looking at, um, in some other way, uh, the safety and the crosswalks along with, um, sidewalks as well, because it's really important to make sure that our infrastructure in that area is, um, meeting, um, you know, the American Disabilities, uh, requirements as well as, um, just moving the town to encourage more walking when they can. Um, I'm glad that Overlook is on the list, um, but looking at this, um, looking, this takes us, this report takes us to twenty twenty one as our projected, um, plan for repairs, right, as of right now?
Correct.
Right, and that addresses, um, quick glancing at this, maybe fourteen to sixteen roads roughly, is that right?
Yep.
And looking at this list of, uh, that you sent, looking at the PCI, I mean, I don't even get to the PCI of seventy until about page six in the report with roughly, um, if I'm guessing, like forty to fifty roads per page. So by twenty twenty one, what percent would you say that we're actually addressing of, of the roads that scored below that seventy percent?
Percent probably, I'm gonna guess off the top of my head, but I'm gonna say five percent maybe.
Right, so we still have, yeah, that's what I'm seeing. I just wanna make sure, because it seems like we have a lot. Is there any reason that we're not adding any more anytime soon? Or we, we need to, do we not have the manpower or the, um, what, what's our, I mean, because I, as I'm all in support of fixing Groton Long Point's, uh, section, which, because of the flooding. Uh, but their grades are seventy-five and we're taking away time from the town, even though they are paying. And we have more roads that are, are only, we're only able to address five percent of this, the ones that are below a seventy. So I'm just wondering, like, do we contract out at all or what's, what's these plans that we can do to kind of move this along?
Well, it's, it's basically the amount of funding that's available. I mean, between all the roads that I show, you know, doing this year and next year, that's gonna use up what we have available, about the one point six million. You know, some of these roads like Flanders and Bunington, they're much, uh, longer, wider roads. We probably will end up contracting those out just for, um, you know, because contractors much more efficient on these, uh, more major long roads. So that's something we'll look at, but, um, really it, it just comes down to the amount of funds we have available right now.
Okay. All right, uh, because like, I, I guess five percent, not, you know, discrediting the work or the, the manpower we have, but just looking at the big picture and looking at the PCI of seventy to achieve. Meanwhile, other roads are, are gonna, you know, these ones that are like seventy and seventy-one are gonna drop into the sixties while repairing the other ones. And we're only able to address five percent in a year. I just didn't know if that is, I don't know what the average rate to, um, a town would want to be moving towards, uh, replacement is all. Um, the, you know, because when, like I said, looking at this, we're, it definitely screams, um, concern. I also, with Council Franco, would like to see the city and the Groton Long Point r- report as well. Um, I think that's a fair description. I know that we vote on the funds for the roads for the city and it would be nice to know what, you know, to see that full report to really make a good, you know, just decision and have a, uh, nice overview of the whole town. Uh, maybe another grid like this with this PCI scoring would be helpful as well, um, on the roads in those areas. But I, I, I do think that we, um, need to look at funding. I, once again, you're just giving a report, but, um, funding certain roads, because this is barely gonna put a dent, um, but thank you for the report. I know you only can do so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think if, if you saw the, the amount of money it would take to get every road above seventy, you would, uh, it would probably half of our annual budget. Don't talk about the whole town's budget.
Absolutely. I guess just looking at, like, the target, I mean, do we have a plan for the next four years or looking beyond twenty twenty one and how we plan to? I think so that we have, you know, an idea of where we should move next, so that we're already thinking about next year's budget.
Yeah, we'll have that for the twenty third.
Thank you, thank you.
Councillors of Perry and then Council Obrey.
I'm, I'm confused about how you selected the, the streets that would be, uh, that would be resurfaced. And I noticed that the first two, um, on the PCI list, the worst on the PCI list are, uh, Old Everts and Windward, and both of them are on the list. But then the list seems to ascend in number and we go from number twenty, uh, PCI all the way up to number twenty-seven, while there are a number red roads that are, um, are twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-seven. And then we finally get to, uh, another part of Old Everts, which has, and that's on the list. And then we come back to Windward again, which is at twenty-nine, at another part of it. And we skip a whole lot of roads that are needed to repair and we get to, uh, Capston. And Capston has, as I recall, has a lot of different ratings and different sections. But at the, at the one section of Capston, it has a rating of about thirty-seven. Why did we skip over all the other roads that are, seem to be in more need of repair according to the PCI schedule?
You know, we kind of generally look at, uh, areas, neighborhood areas, um, to try to, uh, you know, get an economy of scale for having the contractor when they come in, do the reclaiming and when we have all our equipment there. Um, and then also if you look at some, like the third one down, it's a twenty-one is Flanders, which we have for next year. And s- and some of these other ones are, are really small little cul-de-sacs, um, and I've seen, you know, you drive on there. I mean, it's not even, you know, a house or any business on that road. Um, so we just kind of look at it from, you know, practical engineering judgment as well. Rather than just start at the bottom and work our way to the top.
I, I'm, I'm a little concerned that, you know, all of these streets are in one area of Mystic around Capston and Judson. And I'm concerned that some of them having ratings of fifty-five and sixty-seven, it looks like they're getting special treatment. And, and especially since one of them with, with a fifty-five is a street on which one of the councillors lives. I, I just, I don't think that there is any hanky panky there, but I, I'm concerned about the appearance.
I, this is.
It's come on a two thousand eighteen repaving study. I mean, this was already approved for two thousand eighteen repaving and this has been pushed off. So this was from the last study and the last study said that these roads need a paving.
Okay, Mr., um, Mr. Hanover, I don't know if you wanted to address any of Councillors of Perry's concerns. Councillors of Perry?
No, I just echo what, uh, Council Franco just said. These, these roads have been out there for several years, um, uh, you know, from the previous study and they, we've, like I said, we've been putting them off and putting them off because of the gas lines have been going in there and we've been promising these people we'd be out there to do these roads, so.
Were, were the, were the roads that are listed as fifty-five and sixty-seven better? I mean, no, uh, better before or worse before and they got better now without having been resurfaced? I mean, th- it appears that these roads are not among the worst in the town. And, and I'm just concerned about appearances.
I mean, I'm gonna jump in at this point. Um, these are roads that we've already voted, I believe, correct, Mr. Burton?
I forget the timeline, but a council voted on it, which locks again to place on what roads he does.
Right, and, um, at this point, we're trying to keep this an overall look at the study itself. Do you have questions about how to read the study? On the twenty-third, we'll be coming back and we can have these discussions about how we will, will determine which roads are gonna get priority and which are not gonna get priority. But at this point, um, I think those roads have already been set and we've already, they've already been voted by a council, so, um, uh.
I did not vote on my road repave. It was before me, so.
So please keep in mind that, um, we, we're trying to get this at, at a higher level tonight and we'll come back down into the weeds on the twenty-third. Um, Mr. Burton, did you want to add anything at this point?
No, you had called. I mean, that's all I wanted. I was gonna say what I said.
Okay, very good. All right, Council de Perry, is a Perry. Did you have any other questions?
I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, we have two councillors who wish to speak, but I believe they've already spoken, so I'm going to see if Council Parker or Melendez wish to speak at this point?
I do not, thank you.
Council Melendez?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Um, Council Baumgardner, I don't think you spoke on this. We'll go to you, then we'll go to Obrey and Franco.
Um, I, I, I did speak on this already, um, so.
I'm sorry, okay, then wait your turn.
But I, I, quickly, Mayor, I, I, just if I can take a personal point of privilege, I, uh, respectfully, Councillors of Perry, I would remind you of our council rules, uh, that states that the councillor should address the remarks to the mayor and maintain a courteous tone and avoid injecting a personal note into debate or alluding to improper motives of members at the risk of being ruled out of order. Um, so I.
Who are you directing this to?
All right, so we are on to Council Obrey.
All right, I'll ask my question again. I'm sorry, who were you directing that question, that information to?
I, I'm not sure who you're referring to, Council Obrey. Are you referring to the last speaker or the prior speaker?
Andre, did you have somebody in mind when you were reading that?
I, I would like to remind the entire council that we should not be questioning the motives of members of our, of, of our body. Um, it, it does go against our rules and I, I think we, um, we're all better than that, so if we can keep, uh, keep the conversations, um, you know, respectful.
Council Obrey, did you have a question on the road study?
No, I, I think we're fine with how we're talking about things and, uh, my question was answered. I was just looking also for the list from the, from the city. It does say that we're supposed to have a report from each subdivision. And, uh, I would assume the Groton Long Point report was just asking for some work to be done. And, um, I'm sure we probably have a list from the, from the city, but we, it's not part of the package, so it would be good if we could have that.
So I believe that, um, that has been requested already and I'm not sure, Mr. Burton, is that something that we will be looking at on the twenty-third, um, given that we don't vote on their roads?
Greg, you should be able to just send that to me and I can get it out to them right away.
Yeah, I can send that, the reports are very similar to the town for the city in Groton Long Point to you tomorrow, um, get that right out.
That's fine. I have no problem with the fact that it's probably available, but I'm just reading what it says here that we're supposed to have. It requires each subdivision to report to the town council each year, you know, the results of the previous year's work and identify the next set of roads to be completed. So we don't have that information, so I think we should have it. So thank you, uh, John, I appreciate that. And also, if I might, uh, Greg, uh, Mr. Hanover, I just want to tell you, as I've talked to different people, I've had many people, uh, not many, but I've had some people compliment the fact that you're doing an excellent job, so I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, councillor.
You're welcome.
I would echo that sentiment I've heard from, um, citizens as well, that they enjoyed their interactions and you were very responsive. All right, we have two more councillors, Council Franco and then Council Bordelain.
I will pass.
Council Bordelain.
Yes, thank you. Um, I just had a quick question, thumbing through this chart grid. There's been a lot of complaints about River Road and I just wanted, just to, could you, what is the grade of that particular road? And, and, and that is not part of this current plan to fix, correct? Is that it on the list at all, coming up?
Yeah, let me just.
I'm trying to make sure I'm not missing it. I skimmed through it three times today and I'm.
Yeah, it's the, the main part of it from Binless Road to, uh, Route twenty-seven, which is the part that goes, you know, under ninety-five up to Old Mystic is a fifty-six.
Yeah.
And the portion closer to Mystic, um, Binless to Grove Avenue is a sixty-nine and then.
All right.
Yeah, so it's, you know, that road is, is in decent shape according to this inspection report.
All right, perfect, thank you.
So Council Baumgardner, your hand is still up. Do you have a question?
Uh, yes, I do. And actually, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm out of. Yes, I do. And actually, I, I'm sorry, I meant a mayor. I'd just like to echo what, what Councillor Bordelain asked. In fact, I was reading through the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments Bike Ped Study. And they actually recommended that River Road have pedestrian, you know, such bicycle improvements made to that road. So when that does happen, and hopefully that does happen in the very near future, you know, like to see those recommendations be implemented once we do go ahead and repave that road, which I think should be in a pretty, pretty timely fashion in the very near future. But I guess my question to, to Mr. Hanover would be similar to what I asked earlier, but when there are studies done, you know, outside of the town, whether it be the council of governments or even commissioned by the town, are those studies kind of factored in your decision-making process when you rank, you know, what, what, what roads will be addressed first?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we look at all the factors that are involved. You know, whether there's future developments could be occurring on a road in, you know, previous studies that have happened on the road. So yeah, all those factors are, are included in our decision-making process.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hanover. Nothing else, Mayor.
Mr. Burton, did you have something you wanted to add?
I just wanted to ask Mr. Hanover whether we can, for these reports, can we get a copy in alphabetical order also? You know, not just by their index number, but so we can look up purely by road name in order?
Yep.
And Councillor Obrey has her hand up for another question.
Yeah, I think that, I know there's been a lot of discussion about the River Road. And I, I do know we need to address that, but I'm wondering if maybe we should have an educational process as to what we can do on a designated road. I believe that's a designated historic. Is that what they call it?
Seen it road.
Seen it road. And I think it limits what you can do. I don't think you can do many changes. So I think we need an educational review of what could really be done to that road in order to be able to address it properly.
Okay, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like everybody understands how to read the reports. And your questions that you had regarding, you need more information on certain things, that's been heard by staff. And I think at this point, we're ready to go on and you can start contemplating the bigger picture as to how we want to fund this, how we want to go forward, what we want our streets to look like as far as pedestrians and bicyclists. So thank you, Mr. Hanover, for presenting this to us this evening. And I would say if the council has further questions that you think of that you would like answered prior to our next discussion on this item, please get them to Mr. Burton. He can disseminate them to the appropriate town staff. Councillors of Perry, did you have another comment pertinent to this item?
Yes, I, I'm wondering, are we looking at, I, I thought I overheard that that the cost per year is about $1.8 million to do these roads.
In order to get it to the PCI that would be equal to Groton Long Point, the city of Groton, it would be 1.8. Currently, we're at 71, which it would require 1.2 million. So we're looking at a good chunk of change here to start taking care of our infrastructure. So that's why it's so very important that we have accurate information and we take some good time to think about how we want to approach this and how we want to fund it.
Thank you.
Councillor Bordelain has her hand up.
One more question for you, Mr. Hanover. When looking at the replacement of the road, one thing that I, and I might have missed it, I do apologize. I'm not a digital reader and I refuse to pay to print out 60 pages. So I, it, it, when replacing, so looking at the, the list here to replace, what are we replacing it to? When we look at this number that we're going to eventually look at to replace, are we replacing it back to the grade and material that it was already, not grade, the material that was used currently? Or are we switching the material? Or, or how, how will that work? That's my other question is, in replacing the road, what type of material and how is that decided?
Yeah, for these type of roads that are fairly low, you know, on the PCI number, which basically requires a reconstruction, we, we do what we call, we reclaim, which we bring in a contractor that grinds up the excess asphalt into the gravel base. And that creates a very stable base. We grade that out, roll it, then we put in four inches of asphalt. And it's, it's what we call a super pave, which is a higher grade of bituminous or asphalt than was previously used. So the roads actually come out much better than they were previous, even when they're new.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Hanover. And again, if you have questions, please get them to the manager and he will get them to Mr. Hanover. Thank you for your time this evening, sir.
Thank you.
We have some big things to contemplate.
Thank you.
Large ticket items, so please try to take some time and make some philosophical judgments about how you'd like to go forward with this. All right, we are on to, oh, I'm sorry. We need consensus to accept the report. Is there any objection to accepting the report? Hearing none, the council accepts the report as presented. We are on to item 2020-335. And this is another item. This one has no action required. And this is another one where we're just going to be receiving information this evening. So a while back, we asked town staff to present us with options on what is possible to do with the vacated Noank school property. And town staff has a report ready. It was emailed to all of you, so you should have all had a chance to read it over. This evening, we are going to be hearing from town staff. There again, just like the last one, we're not going to have discussion on this. We're not going to be digging into it tonight. This will be, I believe, June 9th, Mr. Burton, is that what we said we were going to try to do?
Correct.
Okay, so June 9th is when we will have our discussion. This will give you time to go through the report in more detail. And we will have people, there are people that wanted to come and speak this evening. And tonight, I feel the first step for us is to receive the town information first. Let's hear from staff first. Following that, we will have the opportunity to invite in the different stakeholder groups and we will hear from the various stakeholders. So tonight is strictly from town staff and it looks like Mr. Reiner and Mr. Bronk are here. There is, there are no other speakers that will be presenting tonight besides them. And if you have questions, I would just like to restate, please keep them pertinent to this topic and please be respectful of each other and town staff. Thank you. And we'll turn it over to, I'm sorry?
I just want to say one thing real quick.
Yes, please.
I just wanted to point out that, as you mentioned, that April 2nd, 2019 meeting is when the council terminated the guiding document and then ended up asking us to put a report together. I just want to point out this is simply options. There is no recommendation from staff. It's simply presenting what things could be done. So nothing in there should be taken as a recommendation.
Correct. And that, that's exactly what the council asks you have done. We ask that staff look at what is potential, what are the potential uses for that property? And bring it back to us, the elected officials, and we make the policy decisions. So staff is simply presenting the options this evening and then we will have time and, and another place to have that discussion and debate and to bring forth our individual opinions on that. I think there are probably nine opinions because there's nine of us. So on the 9th of June, we will hear all those different opinions. So tonight then, let's turn it over to Mr. Reiner or Mr. Bronk. Who do you want to lead, Mr. Mr. Burton?
I believe Mr. Reiner will be leading.
Mr. Reiner, the floor is yours, sir.
Oh, thank you, everyone. Good evening. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. So I just wanted to kind of give a very general overview of some of the issues that we had looked at. So the, you know, former Noank school property is just a little over six acres. It's a R20 zone in down, you know, in Noank, not necessarily subject to R zoning. And we had looked at a few different reuse possibility options. And we kind of looked at these, looking at all the options of what the town could do. And, you know, the first and foremost, kind of the easiest option would be to sell the land as it is for the development of single-family homes. And that's something, we looked at some different general development scenarios of what that could turn out to be. We would not be taking that through the development process and we, you know, working with our assessor and kind of looking at the sale of value of land, houses, et cetera, think that if we did that route, the land would probably sell for somewhere around $719, $720,000 in that general ballpark. So that's option one. The second option was to sell or lease the land to the fire district in Noank because they had expressed interest in that. And that way we would still get revenue initially from the sale or from a long-term lease. But we then would not be collecting any taxes on the property, whereas if we sold it for the development of houses, in the long term, we would get taxes on the house, on the, the land for what was there. A third option was selling the land to either the Groton Housing Authority or some other entity for the development of affordable housing in the town. That's a concern that we've had raised to us before about the need for additional affordable housing in some of these areas. So that's an option as well as, you know, just what can we do to create some more workforce housing in town? And then kind of the last general option that we looked at was setting the land aside for a town park. So those were kind of the four major options in the, the report that was given to you, the memo from the manager. There was also a summary document of the zoning and the setbacks on the property as well as some information and recommendations from the Conservation Commission. I know the Conservation Commission could speak more to their report when we bring this to the Cow in June.
Thank you.
And that's all I really had to offer at this point in time regarding the options. I mean, this piece, depending on what the council does, we can then move forward from there.
Very good. Did Mr. Bronk want to add anything at this point?
I do not have a comment at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. So then, again, I'm trying to keep this upper level at this point. Do councillors have questions about how to read the report? What is in the report? We're not going to be discussing the merits of any particular options this evening. But are there questions you have about how the information was presented? Or questions about you don't, you know, not understanding a particular segment that was reported? And I see Councillor Bordelain has a question.
Thank you for your report. I appreciate all your efforts. My question is, looking back, I was trying to look up some old notes and I see the report here. It talks about how the original school was demolished. What was the cost for that property to be taken down?
Off the top of my head, I think it was somewhere in the $450,000 to $500,000 range.
All right.
I know I have that in my notes somewhere. I'm sorry, I don't have that.
Can we just add it to the report for the notes? I think that's important information when looking at the whole package, just for pieces. Also, a water line was then added, correct? For about $10,000. Is that correct?
A water line was added by Public Works. Yes, I, I don't know the cost of that line. I don't know if Greg's still on the line.
Yeah, I just, so if I, just so I can look everything over, that would be helpful to have that information. Because just looking at it, you know, from what we've already put into it to where it is now is just an important picture. So thank you.
Councillor Obrey.
I'm just wondering, this, this is fine and I appreciate what we have here. But are we anticipating proposals from anybody? I, I believe when we had conversations with the budding neighbors that were concerned about this and had different uses, they were talking about the fire department getting involved. They were talking about trying to put together another group. You know, there were things that, that they talked about. And I'm wondering if we should, we could, are we anticipating that type of response?
That's entirely up to the council on which option they're interested in and which way they want to proceed. So it, it could be, but it doesn't have to be.
I, I think it would be good if we had an idea, if there's something else out there floating in the wind that we should be, you know, taking into the equation of deciding which way to go.
Just to mention, this is under Noank zoning and this is the things that would be allowed for the zoning.
Right. Yeah. No, I understand that, but I, as I said, what, probably the primary one was that I know at one time the fire department wanted to get involved with it and I haven't heard anything about that or actually anything else.
They, they did reach out again last week and I forwarded to the council. They still have an interest in leasing. They leased the tennis courts and basketball court right next to the fire hall there from the town. Long-term lease. They're interested in something similar for the Noank Gardens.
Okay. Do they take care of those, John?
Yes, they actually just did some upgrades at that site there for the, it looks very nice.
Thank you.
And that's the kind of thing that on the 9th, we can invite the fire district in if you would like, Councillor Obrey. And they could be present to discuss their possible ideas for the property as well.
I think that would be an excellent idea. Of course, it was mine.
And Councillor Franco is in the queue, but just so you, if you have these ideas, again, just like with the last, with the last agenda item, please forward them to the manager or myself. And we can keep them in mind and make sure certain people get invited to the next meeting. So I know Councillor Baumgartner has someone that he's going to invite to the next meeting. I have people that ask to come to the next meeting. So if you can just send those emails to us and then we can compile the list to make sure everybody gets the invite.
Council of, Andre is watching the submarines.
All right. So we're going to, Councillor Franco, you have the floor.
So it says in the report that they, there was a cost to renovate the senior center, which was used from 2008, 2010. Does anybody know what that cost is?
I do not. I've never come across that in my notes. John, have you come across that?
No, I, I feel like I saw Greg might have those numbers. But I'm not sure if that, that's a hard number. We certainly could find that. I did find Noank School was $540,000 to demolish. $540,350 was the demolition of, of the Noank School.
Okay. And I was just wondering what the renovation was before they demolished it? And so you, there was an inquiry about leasing the property long-term. So as I do not live in Noank, the park next door to the firehouse, is that open to the whole community of Groton? Or is it just open to Noank residents?
It's open to all.
Oh. And then what kind of lease amount were they? I don't see any kind of dollar amount in there notated in this report that the fire department.
They've not made an official offer, so there is no dollar amount.
No, no official.
They just expressed their interest in entering potential negotiations.
And because I do recall reading some type of document that had maybe a dollar a year notated. Is that something?
I don't recall that from the fire, the fire department, I don't believe has put anything for a dollar amount. Not that I recall anyways.
Also, being on the sports field task force, I brought up that Noank has this property. This, the town ground has this property in Noank actually. And they can fit, and as the report states, a large field and a small field. And I'm, I noticed that there's an economic model in here and it states that, like, open space would be $32,000 a year. Single-family residential with five houses would be $38,000 a year and conservation development would be $28,000 a year. And it doesn't state anything on here about a sports field economic model and what that could possibly bring into the town also. What the value of that would be on that property. So if, if it would be possible, could somebody try and come up with those type of numbers as well?
The Conservation Commission did those other analysis, which I could speak to next time. We can ask. I don't know if they have the information to do it or not, but we can ask.
Yes, I had an in-depth discussion with Mr. Dunn about that. And at the task force, the fields task force, I had requested Mr. Frost to forward me some information that Mr. Dunn could use. And it hasn't, I haven't gotten that information yet. So I don't know how, if Parks and Rec may have some kind of information that would help Mr. Dunn. I mean, I brought it up with Jerry there as well. Then maybe Mr. Dunn could input these numbers to see what the economic value would be towards the community to have a possible sports fields up there. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, I'm looking at hands. Give me a second. We have, I'm looking at hands, give me a second. We have Councilor Bordelone and then Baumgartner.
Thank you. One other question, now that we have what can be particular, you know, what items can be developed there based on what knowing will allow for those, that particular property based on the zoning, is that correct? Is my understanding that correctly? Okay. I think it's important because it's, or is it possible that we also take a look now that we have this, and the council has to decide? I think the missing link in all this is not just the people who live around the garden, but also the whole taxpayer body as a whole town of Groton. Is there any way that, and once again, if it's not to be discussed now, or a plan to discuss, I think it's important that we open this up to the town of Groton in the paper, as well as maybe a survey or something, and let the town kind of send some feedback and kind of vote on where they'd like to see that field go. We know where the people who live around it stand, but is there a way as a council or direction or consensus that we can, you know, kind of get the Groton at large invested in the development? Because truly, looking at the cost of the demolition, and then the cost that they renovated, and the cost from the water, I mean, all taxpayers have an investment in that property, and for the good of Groton. So it'd be interesting to see, to really make an informed decision based on how the community responds. Is that a possibility at all, or how do we go about that?
I think we just did that, actually, by, by having this on the agenda tonight, and having this report included in the agenda packet and available for the town to see, and for the public that's listening at home tonight. Now it's up to us to listen to our constituents, and I'm sure we will be hearing from many people. I've already received emails on this matter, and not just from people that are budding property owners. So I think by having this presentation tonight by Mr. Reiner, we've done just that.
I would, I guess for clarification purposes, what I was asking is not everyone really follows the meeting, so in a perfect world, yes. But I would think that we should also put it in the newspaper, and, and, and kind of get people to draw in to the link, since this is coming up. And I think there should be, yes, this is a start, I agree, but I feel that we need to capture a broader audience, and I think that we can get better input from the community at large. So I'm asking, is there another way that we can get some more input from the community versus just this meeting? By putting it in the paper, and, and really actually having maybe a special meeting to, you know, at some point to discuss, and have people kind of weigh in, put all, all the options out there, and have either a polling, or they can respond in, or a newspaper write-up. But I just don't feel this meeting is just enough. The report tonight was wonderful, but I feel that we could do more, and that's what I'm asking.
If I may, you can, you can put a letter in the newspaper and invite people to respond to you at your email address, and you can present that to the council when you get your responses. So you, as even as an individual, even though you don't speak for the council, you speak for yourself, but you can invite, I see nothing wrong with your inviting people to feed, give you feedback on their opinions regarding the proposals.
And that's fine, but I guess once again, what I was asking is it's something that as a council, we should bring forward to make sure we're getting all constituents in the town's input on the property. And if this council and this, and the town, you know, everybody feels that we're doing enough by this, that's fine. I'm, I'm just a voice speaking out, making sure that the transparency is there, and to get other people, because with COVID going on and things, people aren't thinking about knowing gardening on June 9th. Let's be real. So, you know, making sure that, putting a simple article that a report is out, you know, please, you know, I think that's very simple, and I think that's something we should do for, for, for the town. I don't understand why that would be an issue, but that's just me.
I don't think anyone said it was an issue. We have Councilor Baumgartner, Zepari, and Obrey. Councilor Baumgartner, do you have a question?
So I have a, how do I get my answer then? I guess I feel like I wasn't done. Thank you. Is there a process in which we need to do?
I don't think anyone else has expressed interest. Other people are waiting to have the floor, so let's let them speak, and perhaps they'll back up your sentiment. Councilor Baumgartner, Obrey, Baumgartner's a Perry, then Obrey.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. A quick question for John, and followed by a brief, brief statement. But John, was any information or, or items, recorded items from the initial knowing school gardens task force included in the report?
No, it's been presented to the council before when we looked at it last year, but it's not in the report itself.
Okay. And so just, and I, I've shared this with Mayor Gronitowski privately, but in the town manager. But last week, I asked Brian Kent of Kent Frost, the opposite of Chad Frost, to update his initial design for the knowing school garden, you know, that had been proposed by the task force to incorporate features of an arboretum. And so, you know, obviously, we'll be talking about that at, at the council meeting on the ninth, but that master plan synthesizes the interests of several members of the council, you know, who are calling for expanded open space, building sports fields and developing, you know, unique community spaces. And so, you know, I would like to submit that, you know, into the record as well as the original design, you know, since, again, you know, I can't stress enough, the redesign is not an end-all, be-all, but, you know, can offer a framework as to how the town can visualize the space as an outdoor, you know, passive recreational facility, and offers a vision of what we can offer our citizens. So we'd just like to, to submit those items into the record, as someone who, you know, who has been emphatic in, you know, recognizing that we ought to protect that land and, you know, as protected open space and perpetuity. So again, submitting those two items into the record, and looking forward to our conversation on the ninth.
Thank you, Councilor Baumgartner. Those were received by the entire council earlier today, and Mr. Kent will be included in the people to attend. We're going to have quite, quite the group of people at that meeting, so it'll be good for all of us to hear from everybody. Councilors of Perry and then Obrey.
I spoke up out of turn, and I'm all set. Thanks.
You're good. Okay. And then Councilor Obrey, please.
I think that we probably could fairly easily put something into the Facebook page for the town, and some of the other avenues that we have to get some information out. Just a small notice that we're going to be discussing it, and if people have opinions about it, either email us, make arrangements to be part of the meeting. And people that are interested, we probably have more people reading it right now, because they run out of things to read. So I think we could probably get it out that way, as well as, as doing anything that would cost any money. So I think if we went that way, Portia, I think we could probably reach out to quite a few people. Also, it seems to me that we had a public hearing on this back when the discussion was rampant about what we were going to do. And I'm quite sure that we did, because we had a lot of people that came in and spoke. So just to remind people that this is still ongoing, I think if we just put it in our online publications, we could probably kind of cover getting out to a lot more people. That's my suggestion. I think Portia is correct.
All righty. Councilor Franco, did you wish to speak on this? Okay, so we have Councilor Obrey who would like something put out on Facebook, Councilor Bordelone would like a little more publicity on this. Does anyone else wish to speak? Councilor Parker or Melendez?
Come on, Rachel.
Okay. Councilor Parker, did you want the floor?
I agree. I believe we've put out as much information as we can, and we've put it out on Facebook, it's always on the town's website, and the agendas are always posted online. And we do mention this every time we have a meeting. We do have avenues that people can reach out and let us know what they're thinking of. I don't believe we should post in newspaper, because that is a cost, and if we put that out through the newspaper, do we have to publish every single article containing the report that we've been given, and the design mechanisms that are, I shouldn't say mechanisms, the design plans that people have come up with? If the town manager could answer that for me?
Please, please restate that question?
If we had to put it through the, Council Boardland requested to have it through the newspaper, would we have to put it out? Because I know it's a big cost to publish something like that. Would we have to advertise the whole entire packet, as in the reports, the plans?
No, we, no, we could just give the, you know, appropriate links to where to get the information. Matter of fact, there's a good chance we could send out, you know, post something on Facebook, and then ask if the newspaper would be willing to do a little write-up for free.
Unless you posted in the Groton Patch with ten, and?
Right.
Okay. Because I believe the day, we probably would be charged, correct?
Well, they often, if I ask them or do a press release, they'll often do an article for the town, so maybe, maybe not.
All right. Thank you.
Councilor Melendez, did you wish to give your input at this time?
Not, I, I think it would be, I think the meanings are, reach a lot of people, but I don't see any problem in trying to reach an even wider audience, however we could. That's it.
Thank you. I think everyone's spoken, so Councilor Bordelone, back to you.
Yeah, I guess what I was just trying to say is any avenue that we can use, you know, town Facebook page or something, just, I don't, not sure, and once again, I'm newly on the council in the last however many months, or almost year, is the, when it first came up, even though I remember attending the meeting, we didn't have this report in front of us, right? When we had our public discussion, is that correct? When people came and commented, we didn't have these zoning options. So now I'm just saying.
This report is brand new.
Correct. I'm just, so I'm clarifying what everyone else was saying, saying, we already did this, we already had a meeting, people came and spoke. What I'm, what I was stating is now we have a report, so now we are saying, everyone had a thought or a vision, and now we have a report that says this is only what we can do. So that's what I was thinking, is just revisiting that and having another chance to say, okay, here's what we can do now, where does everybody feel, get a feel of the whole town at large? And I do think, you know, doing a press release, the papers would love to write about something like this, and I also think using the Facebook page would allow, just, you know, the more information, the better. There's nothing wrong with putting the information out there that way, or being as transparent as possible. And I'm not saying that these meetings are not suffice. I, I just think it's very important to really get things out on social media and really use the avenues we have on hand. Thank you.
So I don't believe there is any strong objection to Facebook posts. I don't believe there's any strong objection to trying to get some free press on this. I did hear we don't want to spend any money to publicize this any further. So, Mr. Burt, can staff take care of a Facebook post for us, and maybe emailing Ms. Drellick at the day?
Sure. John, hopefully Lauren's available maybe to help you with that, but you and I can touch base tomorrow. But one way or another, yes, we will do that.
Very good. So again, back to, back to the big picture, does anyone have questions on anything in the report that you're not understanding? Or are you comfortable that you can take it and go read it over for a couple weeks, ask questions, and come back prepared to make some big philosophical decisions? Are we, are we set with this? And we can?
If I might, I think that, I think, I don't, I don't really think probably at that time, we'll be ready to make a decision, quite honestly, because I think we need to hear what other people have in mind that they might, that would add to this. So I think it, I think it's timely that we bring in people that want to talk, and we then put everything together and try to make a final decision.
I agree.
This has been going on since, what, 2012? So it might be time to read through the history of it, see what we've got, if we've got anything new, and then make a decision. But it might be a little hard that evening, but that's up to everybody.
No, I agree. We may be able to whittle out some choices, though. You know, we may be able to look at this and say, you know, not that, whatever. But I agree, it is, this is going to take months to get through and for us to make a decision. So it's important that people in the town reach out to us, and we hear from everybody, and know that the council has to make a decision that's good for the entire town. All right. Very good. And thank you, Mr. Bronk and Mr. Reiner. And Councilor Bordelone, do you have your hand up again?
Yeah, I have one more question. Is there, and you might not have it today, just for processing for later, is there a cost currently as to maintaining the property, what the town is currently paying?
Really, all we do is mow there, as far as I, as far as I know. So there's not a lot of cost. I mean, that's just staff time. I don't have a breakdown of what that would be.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Very good. So no action required on this, so we're set. Thank you very much. We are on to item 5C, 2020-188-3, Neighborhood Assistance Act. And if you're following in your agenda, it's on page 58. And we are on to Councilor Parker, I believe.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the proposals for the Bill Memorial Library, Eastern Connecticut Housing Opportunities, Sacred Heart School, Groton Housing Authority, Fairview, and Avery Cop, right? I hope I said that right. Museum for the 2020 Neighborhood Assistance Act, I so move.
Exactly.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Baumgartner. This is the item where we had the public hearing earlier, and I'm not seeing any hands. Does anyone wish to speak to this, or does anyone need to make any statements before we go on? Let's get to the right page.
Anybody want to give us a quick overview?
Mr. Bird, did you want to give a quick overview on this?
That John will give an overview.
Thank you.
Actually, I'll let Paige give a quick overview, but this is the annual grant that we are basically just help facilitate the process for this. Paige, do you want to weigh in on this?
Yes, I think we're passing the buck around, but yes, that's correct. This is a state program that works off of tax credits. So a nonprofit and also municipalities are eligible to submit projects applied to the state, and the value of that project is matched with companies that are looking for tax credits. Oftentimes, they're utility companies, EverSource, Groton Utilities. I believe most projects are matched 60 cents for every dollar cost. The exception to that would be an energy efficiency project, where it is a full dollar-for-dollar match. There is no cost to the town of Groton. This is entirely a state program. But the state, I believe, simply wants to be assured that there aren't any conflicts with any local programs or values, so they run the program through the town council. So that's why we review it. But there is literally no cost, other than Groton staff who would do the intake, the processing and coordination with the state.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, it's no cost to the town, it's just a pass-through. I'm not seeing any hands, so we will vote on 2020-188 Neighborhood Assistance Act. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are at eight councilors this evening. Okay, what I'm going to ask now is that we move to items six and seven. Review of agenda items, I have no review. Mr. Burt, do you have anything, any agenda items that you wish to review at this point?
I do not.
And then let's go to other business. Does any councilor have any other business that they wish to raise this evening? I'm going to give a pause for a minute. Councilor Bordelone? I'm gonna pause for a minute. Counselor Bordelon?
No, I I just, I don't know if it's the appropriate time. I just wanted to thank John for the list of. All the pending different items that are still kind of in the works. It's a nice way to kind of keep everything.
Thanks to Counselor Obrey for requesting that.
And is it something that we should read every meeting to kind of shed light to it under the new bit? Or where would that go to just say that these are things that are still, you know, not forgotten but are around?
It would be on the regular council agenda packets.
That's where, that's where it will continue to be posted?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Obrey?
Uh, let me think, let me think. Damn, I forgot to write a note. It went right out of my head. Sorry.
That's okay. All right, if no one has anything else, the last two items on the agenda, just for the public. Are five D and five E, update on excess property redevelopment for Colonel Ledger. And five E land acquisition. And both of these are potential executive sessions. What that means is when the council goes into executive session, it is closed to the public. So we will be closing the link, the live link, and we will be continuing the meeting for these items. Counselor Obrey, did you remember what you wanted to say?
Yes, I apologize for.
That's okay, go for it.
Aging mind, but I had a few people that have approached me. I know we discussed it before, but I'm thinking maybe at the next meeting, we might be able to talk about it a little bit. As we all know, the restaurants and so forth are just really, really going through an extremely difficult time. And it was asked if there could maybe be a delay on the July first. Date for implementing the changes that we've required. And I don't know if you all feel it's appropriate to talk about it again. But I thought maybe under the circumstances and seeing what people, how hard they're struggling, that maybe it might be good to talk about it again.
So we don't have anything else on the agenda tonight. We can't bring that in this evening on the agenda.
I know, no, I understand that. I'm hard to be maybe at the next meeting.
Okay, so that would be. Are you looking for a referral for the next cow then, Counselor Obrey?
Yes, please.
So if you would, if you would send me an email and then other councillors, if you could just. Reply with your desire to also take up that item, that would be great.
And if they, if they don't, you'll kind of have a vote. We'll know which way to go.
Counselor Bordelon, I don't know if you lowered your hand or if you have a new hand.
I have my hand up. My quick thing was, do we have to do it through email tonight? We couldn't just get the three people right now if we needed to to move this along?
Well, tonight, we're not going to have it on the agenda, but are there people that wish to take this up as we did with Overlook Drive for Counselor Franco's request? Do, are there people that wish to have this added to the next cow agenda? Are there? People that wish to have it added to the next cow?
Counselor Parker?
Okay, so Mr. Bird?
I say, why wait?
Can you please add that to the cow for June ninth?
I will.
Thank you, sir.
We, we did consider this once before.
We did.
And but I would be happy to look at it again.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing that, Counselor Zepary. All right, so.
I had one more thing, my, my, the other thing to that.
Counselor Bordelon, Counselor Bumgardner also had his hand up, please.
I I'd just like to point out, maybe if Counselor Obrey wasn't so preoccupied with teasing this council, she'd remember what she was gonna ask.
Alrighty, Counselor Bordelon.
Looking at the executive session items, is there anything that can be discussed? That does not need to be discussed in executive session that can be discussed, discussed before going in as an update or anything related to the information?
I believe the first one, we, John could give an update on what the committee's done with Colonel Ledger. The second one, no, there's, other than to say we're applying. But John, can you give just a brief update on the committee for Colonel Ledger?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that once we get to that agenda item. Or do you want me to give it now?
So I can give it now.
So hold on one second, please. So we are done with other business then, I take it, council? We are done with other business. So then we are back to item five D. And we can only discuss so much publicly at this point. So, Mr. Reiner. If you'd like to give just a broad overview, please, before we go into executive session.
Sure. So again, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services, and also on the call is Paige Bronk, our Economic and Community Development Manager. He can fill in a couple of other pieces. So Colonel Ledger, the economic development team has been marketing this property for over a year. We had issued an RFP for the property, had shown it, advertised it and received a number of proposals. There's, there was an interview committee that was put together and held some interviews. And tonight wanted, we wanted to talk to the council about making a recommendation for a preferred developer. And what those development options would be for the site. Before we start moving this any more forward, there's no draft purchase and sales agreements. There's no renderings. We haven't gotten to that point yet, looking at the site. But I don't know, Paige, is there any more that you want to share in open session at this point? Because, you know, we certainly want to be as transparent as we possibly can. We've also been working with the city of Groton on this redevelopment process and including them in that interview committee.
Sure, I I can provide a few comments. I think most people. Understand where this property is, but maybe there are a few that don't. It's at 120 West Street, which is behind the Groton Municipal Complex. It's located about a half a mile from EB, roughly eight acres of land. And the building is about 20,000 square feet. It's a single story former, former elementary school building. Constructed in 1963. School's been closed since 2008. We did develop the RFP, issued it July 2019. The deadline for submittals was September 27, 2019. And then we moved forward through our process and have gotten to this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner, Mr. Bronk. And just for the public, in our agenda packet, there are. A discussion of the issue and discussion of the background provided. So if you wish to read that, you're welcome to go to the town website. And you could view the information for this particular item and for the next item as well. All right, so I will entertain a motion. We're on 2019-326. I'll entertain a motion to, when to execute, oh, wait a minute. Mr. Bird, we normally have the motions written up and I don't have that. Do you have that? Or can we just make a motion to go into, I don't have the numbers of the statute.
Yeah, we can do a motion to go into executive session for discussion of. Yeah, just leave it that. Yeah, motion to executive session, that's fine. Unless you want to take a break and write something up.
Second.
Okay, so that was moved by Zepary and seconded by Parker. All those in favor of going into executive session as per appropriate statute, please say aye.
You have to name who goes in.
Goes into there, that's right. So we have the town council members, me, Paige, John Reiner and Deb Jones. Is that everybody?
Council, Bert, Reiner, Bronk, Jones.
And I apologize for not having it ready. It's, we're doing one, we haven't done an executive session on Zoom. I apologize. That's my fault.
It's okay.
GM TV.
So I'm sorry, Councillors of Perry?
We still have GM TV as one of the participants.
They, as soon as we vote, they'll be, they will be cutting out. All right, so all those in favor of entering into executive session for 2019-328 as per the appropriate statutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are at eight councillors. And that was unanimous vote and it is 8:10 PM. And we are in executive session. Mr. Greeley and Mr. Bird will need to cut the record in the live broadcast feed.